People you guys.
All right, let's call the City of Milton Common Council meeting to order Tuesday, June 6, 2023 at 6:00 PM. It is on amended agenda and can I get confirmation of appropriate meeting notice?
Meeting notice for the amended agenda was posted on Monday, June 5 at Hometown Ace Hardware, Milton City Hall and Milton Pigly Wiggly.
Thank you. And is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the agenda? Oh, yes. Yes. So Jenny, as always, it's very helpful. And there is a little bit of a change to the agenda. Number 18 is going to be moved to number 12. Because somebody is here to talk on that. And you all can anticipate that I will forget that. But Jenny's going to do her best to help it. So with that amendment to the agenda, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? We have an amended agenda. And now Eric Stockman so graciously volunteered to lead us in the pledge of allegiance. So we have a couple of proclamations, but we have a really special one that I'm going to read out loud. And we are going to present this proclamation to Heidi. And I'm going to try and say your last name correctly, Dyniger. Dyniger. And she is from the YWCA. So we're going to, I'm going to go in front and I will read the proclamation and Heidi will come up and I will present it to her and Inga's going to throw the mic at me.
This is from the Office of the Mayor of the City of Milton. Whereas in 1619, a ship arrived in the British colony of Virginia bearing cargo of enslaved people from Africa. And whereas black people were bought and sold as slave labor for 250 years and suffered unspeakable acts of violence. And whereas President Abraham Lincoln first issued the Emancipation Proclamation effective January 1, 1863, freeing enslaved people in the South. However, many Southern enslavers ignored that order. On June 19, 1865, Union soldiers arrived in Galveston, Texas to enforce the president's order, freeing enslaved people two and a half years after it was first decreed. This day has since come to be known as Juneteenth. And whereas other systems of oppression such as sharecropping, Jim Crow, redlining, mass incarceration, and anti-black violence throughout our country's history. And whereas Juneteenth is a day to reflect on both bondage and freedom. It is in equal measure, a remembrance of enslavement and subjugation, as well as a celebration of the promise of a brighter morning to come. In continued effort to build equitable communities, the City of Milton joins the YWCA of Rock County and other institutions and individuals who are committed to eliminating racism and promoting peace, justice, freedom, and dignity. Now, therefore, I, Anissa Welch, Mayor of the City of Milton, do hereby recognize Monday, June 19, 2023, as Juneteenth and encourage residents, local businesses, educators, and community and faith-based organizations to celebrate diversity and advocate for the elimination of racism.
And I will formally present this to the YWCA on behalf of the City of Milton.
Thank you so much. Really appreciate it.
Thank you. And thank you for joining us this evening. And there are celebrations in the Beloit area Saturday, June 17. There is, do you know the names of both of them? There is two different ones, right?
Yes, but ours.
Yours is?
I don't know where the other one is.
Yeah, yep.
I'll throw some cards on the back for you all.
There will be cards on the back for details on the Telfer Park Celebration sponsored in partnership with the YWCA. Thank you very much. Thank you for coming.
And we have other proclamations honoring Great Outdoors Month, Safety Month, and of course Dairy Month. And this past Saturday, there was a Rock County Dairy Breakfast that looked like a really large crowd attended. Next item on the agenda is approval of the consent agenda.
I so move.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? All right, that motion carries. Public comments regarding items which can be affected by council action. And we do have presenters signed in. And if you would like to come and speak on an agenda item now, you can come up to the podium and give your first and last name and your address, or you can speak when that agenda item comes up. So if you'd like to speak now, head to the podium. If you don't head to the podium, we'll go on to the next agenda items. Okay, there is no race to the podium and maybe there won't be a race all night. Okay. Discussion and possible action regarding request to amend Article 7, the keeping of chickens.
So City Hall received a request from Ed Jacobson to review the current ordinance and had a couple of recommendations for updates. And I believe Ed is in the audience right now.
Well, hello, City Council. I first want to thank you for your time and allowing me to speak this, this evening. And I just want to say that I respect and honor the role that you play as a civil magistrate. So thank you. My name is Ed Jacobson. I live at 603 Tigger Court here in Milton with my wife and my one-year-old daughter Teddy. I'm a small, I'm the owner of a small catering business that has its service base here in Milton. And I'm also on my second year of the Milton Community Garden. And I'm also a legitimate chicken keeping permit holder as well, as of recent. So I'm here tonight because I would like to request, not for myself, but I believe it's a request for the sake of the City of Milton. I think it's in the best interest of the city to amend the requirement under the City of Milton's chicken keeping ordinance, specifically the requirement as it pertains to the, the number of square feet required to, the amount of square feet per chicken required to keep chickens within the city, which is, right now, it's 16 square feet. And that composes all of the square feet with the chicken coop and the run altogether. And so my conviction is that the, the ordinance requirement is too high. And it actually, and I'll expound on this later, but it imposes a sort of strain on those who might be on the fence of keeping chicken within the city. And so in my recommendation is 12, I'm sorry, my recommendation is 10 square feet per chicken. So from 16 as it stands to 10. I just wanted to note a couple sources. And just, just for, I think it might be helpful for the sake of context, is that there's a poultry extension website off of the US Department of Agriculture. And from what I could see, the minimum that they were recommending was around 13 to 14 square feet per chicken. And I'm requesting 10. And then the City of Janesville, like I said, not like there's a competition, but City of Janesville, for context, they require three square feet per chicken for just the coop structure. And then they actually set maximums for, like you cannot exceed 40 square foot for the run. So if you have, for example, if you have four chickens, that's three apiece, three square feet apiece, puts you at 12, plus 40 would get you around 50 square feet. And so just, just for the sake of context, I wanted to mention those two, those two sources. But as I, as I, as I go on, I wanted to just note some of the benefits that actually, like I got the permit. And so I don't, this isn't really, like, I don't exactly have a dog in the fight anymore because I'm obeying the ordinance and I got the permit and everything. So, but I think that there's actually very good benefits to amending this for the sake of the citizenry of Milton. And the three benefits I, I believe that we should consider tonight are healthy food, food security, and then there's a strong community building appeal that chicken keeping provides. And so I, I, I think it's understandable to say that a benefit of having backyard poultry is that you can have control over the conditions and the diet of the birds. And there's a, there's a nice advantage that you can have if you're interested in the, the health and the source of your food. And then I thought about this, this afternoon is that the square feet per chicken that, so I'm sorry, the eggs that you buy from the store are laid most likely by chickens that have a far less square foot requiring, a square foot per chicken. So like when you go and buy eggs from QuickTrip, like those were likely produced from a chicken that they were like, they never see the sun and they were just fed terrible food. And then like we go buy from the store and we eat that. So just, just to consider is that 16 is like 16 square feet per chicken is on the way other side of the spectrum is what my contention is. The next benefit I, as I mentioned, was food security. And so as a young father, young man and young father and husband, I'm concerned about food providing for my family, as I believe is a proper thing. And so when COVID-19, when that everything was going on and then food shortages that kind of ensued a little bit after that, and then inflation that we've seen recently, I think there's a good case to be made that, you know, encouraging and promoting people to, or at least not in straining them from keeping backyard poultry would be good just for the sake of trying to have a little bit more nearness to your food. So you're not as dependent on systems that are a little bit more fragile. I like to call it anti-fragile. So things like chicken keeping and gardening. And then the last benefit is there's a strong community building appeal that I believe exists when you, when you keep, when you garden or when you keep chickens. So I'll keep the chickens in this case. So my family and I will find ourselves sitting next to the chicken coop and the run several times during the week in the evenings, just like with my, with my daughter, my wife, we'll just sit next to the run and watch the chickens. And my, my daughter loves them and my wife loves them. And, and it's just like a nice way to spend the evening. And then my friends, when they come over, they'll also, we'll just like hang out by the chickens. And then the, and then the, but by community building also, the, my neighbors that I've never met before and their children, they will come out also and hang out with my wife and my daughter. We'll all just like hang out together by the chickens, which I think is very interesting that I've never met these people before. And I, I, not that I didn't like them, it's just, it gets busy. But it's the chickens that kind of drew us together, which sounds silly, but I think there's actually very, something very innate. It's very human and and good and natural. And so I'm not trying to say that the requirement disallows these good things. I'm simply trying to say that the 16 square feet per chicken imposes a strain on those who may, might not be crazy enough to actually go through with it like me. So I went through with it and I did it. But there might be those that haven't really thought about all of these things. And they might be just, you know, more simply interested in it. But the, the 16 square feet per chicken, it gets a big structure, the thing that I've, I've built. It's a very big coop. It's bigger than it needs to be. And it's a big run that I have too. And so for those that might be interested in it and would actually glean the benefits that I believe, even if they don't realize it, that I just listed prior to this, they might decide not to just because of the strain that the 16 square feet per chicken imposes that I believe. And so, yes, as I said, I don't believe that the, the current requirement disallows these good things. And I see the wisdom, I see a degree of wisdom that's behind it, trying to promote attractive, clean, and peaceful neighborhoods. And we live in a city after all. But I do believe that 10 square feet per chicken actually achieves all of these things while also achieves the interest of trying to have a, the, a city that's, has its own well-being, but also accommodating the interests of the family that might be interested in food security and healthy food and in building community as well. So that is my request. And I want to thank you all for your time.
Thank you. Thank you for sharing with us. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on this topic? Zachary, is that correct? Come on up.
Hello, my name is Zachary Bergs. I'm actually friends with Ed. Part of the reason why I'm speaking on this issue is because I actually come from the ag industry. I grew up in 4H and FFA. So I've been around it my entire life. My dad has been a feed nutritionist for 30 years. So he's actually worked with production-sized farms like Yuppie Hill Poultry over in, I think Burlington, Wisconsin, and other numerous animals. When it comes to production food that we get at the store, things like cage-free just means that they're not in a cage. They're still in a structure and they still have less than 10 square feet as Ed is looking for. As someone who had chickens when I was a little kid, and my grandparents' farm, which also had tons of chickens, the, I think when the USDA is going for 13 square feet per chicken, or other cities are trying to limit the amount of chickens or things like that, they're looking for the health of the animal on behalf of the health of the individual too. When it comes to that, the biggest indicator of health for the animal is interaction, how often you interact with the animal. There's been numerous studies that smaller farms produce better quality products just because the animals have more one-on-one action with the owners who are taking care of them. Also, they typically have higher quality food stuff available to them. So things like table scraps, so vegetable stuff like that, that animals in a production facility wouldn't get. They're typically fed a grain-based diet, typically wheat or oats or corn. That's typically the diet of it. A lot of times it just ends up being soybeans because it's the cheapest thing. So for the, the health of the animal and also for the health of the community, the, the 10 square feet requirement, I think, is a good idea, but primarily because the people that are going to be taking care of them are more one-on-one with the animals. As a, just side factoid, there was a city in Belgium that offered people the opportunity of getting two chickens a person, so then they could feed their table scraps to the chickens. And they reduced their city landfill intake by 100 tons that year. So the amount of food that chickens would then be taking in, although in this case is much smaller, would reduce the environmental impact as well, but also at the same time providing fertilizer for the lawns that they're on. So chickens have many multiple benefits, like building better neighborhooded communities, so on and so forth. But when it comes to the health of the animal, that's where I'm coming from. That's my dog in this fight. I want to make sure that the animals are as healthy as possible. As someone who grew up raising pigs and sheep and taking them to the 4H fair, that's kind of my dog in this fight. So I also think that Ed's idea of 10 square feet per chicken is a good idea. So that's where I'm coming from. So thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on the topic of chickens? Okay, thank you very much. Council.
I feel like as we continue to evolve with the chickens and any other animals, pigeons and all the other birds that we have in the city, I think that the best that we can do is learn from those who are actually experiencing it. I think it's a good idea to, to take a look at this ordinance and bring it back to council and look at the 10-foot.
We set our size before to get to the 16 feet. What determined that?
From the information that I have, it was proposed and there was not a discussion specifically on changing it at that point. So that, that was just what was proposed at that point.
I was just curious where the number came from in the first place.
Okay.
The point, your point that the chickens are being taken care of in a smaller environment and with more people around them, I think that that is a very big thing for us to keep in mind.
Any other comments or questions from council? Is there a motion to give staff direction?
I'll make a motion that we direct, to direct staff to take a look at our chicken ordinance and bring it back at our next council meeting with the change to the 10-foot size restriction.
Square, 10 square feet.
10 square feet, yes.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, there is a motion and a second. Any further questions or comments? All those in favor say aye. Is there anyone opposed? All right, that motion carries and we'll have something on a future agenda. And thank you everyone for coming tonight and sharing your knowledge and experience with the council. All right, our next item on the agenda, discussion and possible action regarding special event permit application for Milton area youth center premiere car show and fundraiser.
This is the Milton area youth center. They are requesting approval for a car show scheduled for June 30. Since the application was submitted, there is a slight change. It will still be from 3:00 PM to 9:00 PM that they're requesting the parking lot by railroad park is closed. But the actual event instead of 5:00 to 8:00 will be from 4:00 to 7:00. And so the reason that this is on the agenda is because this is a new event. Plus then it is closing down a public parking lot on a Friday evening from that 3:00 PM to 9:00 PM. And Alyssa from the Milton area youth center is here to answer any questions too.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Yes, we are, um.
Can you do your first and last name and address, please?
Yes, I am Alyssa Berg and I'm the director of the Milton area youth center. Milton area youth center is located at 44 Second Street here in Milton. And we are, do I need my address as well? Just the address for the youth center.
Your address too, please.
Okay, I am located at 321 Rock Street and I live in Janesville, Wisconsin. So we are looking at doing our first annual Macy Car Show. And it will be at the railroad park, at that parking center location right adjacent to it. So I do apologize. We would be closing that section off. Probably, we would like it's closed off before we get there for arrival at 3 o'clock. And then it would be closed off until all cars are removed after the event ends at 7:00. We plan on having just a car show, possibly a couple of like slushy and ice cream vendors, along with, we'll have our tent that will have 50/50 raffle, along with raffle baskets as well available. Any questions of anybody's?
I have a couple.
Yes.
Have you taken any time to speak to the businesses around there that would be affected by the parking issue?
Yes, I did. And all of the businesses are 100% on board. Milton Family Restaurant, they are the one that is right there. He said that the only ones that would be affected by his, the parking usually are only his employees.
Right.
And he's like, we want something on this side of Milton. And so they're all really excited. I was not able to connect with Clakes Union Depot owners because they were not in and neither with Club Bub. But through the, all the businesses, they were all 100% for it. We want, we want to highlight Merchant Row. We're able to participate here at Parkview during the community market, night market events. But there's nothing that happens at Merchant Row. And all of Milton supports us. So we want to support all of Milton. So that's why we chose Merchant Row as our location. I did also survey the parking on a holiday weekend. And the majority of cars is, there is 22 cars. And they're all, most of them, I could tell were staff. Half of them were staff. They were, I do have pictures available of me being, but there, the parking that would be affected would be minimal because the parking of Merchant Row, there's still so much parking in that area, even during that timeframe, that them be moving over still would leave a lot of parking open.
My other question is, or it's not really a question, but I would encourage you to at least notify the, I think there are three houses to the west across the street to just let them know that this will be going on. So that they're aware that there might be a little noise and a lot of people across the street during that timeframe.
Oh, absolutely. We plan on sending a letter out even, even though I have already talked to the businesses, we plan on sending a letter out immediately as well, describing all of the events. And we would do that to the houses as well. Yes. We want, we, we respect our town. We, you know, we, we love how our town supports us and we want to support them and be as kind to them as we can.
Any other questions or comments?
I agree. I think this is a great thing and that we need to get something on the other side of town. And I've heard a lot of people say that even to me, we need to do something over in Junction Square. So I'll make a motion that we approve the special events permit application.
Second.
There is a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? Congratulations and good luck with your event.
Thank you.
All right, so now, after I've only messed up the agenda once, number 18, we move to number 12, discussion and possible action on residential exterior improvement program grant requests.
So the initial deadline for applications was in April. The council awarded two, two awards during that cycle. And we opened it up for additional applications to come in because there was still about $19,000 left in the 2023 allocation. We received four additional applications. Those are for 235 North Clear Lake Avenue, 28 Division Street, 742 East Madison Avenue, and 916 Lamar Drive. The CDA met and they are recommending approval of three of the four grants. The fourth grant that they are not recommending approval for, that's a commercial property. And they think it would be best for that property owner to apply under the commercial facade grant. and they think it would be best for that property owner to apply under the commercial facade grant. So they requested that we make that recommendation to them and deny the request for this grant program.
And is there anybody that would like to speak on this? And please come up, give us your first and last name and your address.
Um, my name is Taylor Furlano and I live at two thirty-five North Clear Lake Avenue, Milton. Um, I don't, I just came up in case you guys had any questions because technically I'm a little um, outside of the guidelines, I would say, but I was hoping that I still could apply for it and stuff. I appreciate you guys, um, looking at it and, um, potentially accepting it.
So her application is for the two thirty-five North Clear Lake Avenue. Um, the C D A discussed the grant eligibility requirements, which requires a grant applicant to be in the property for at least five years. Taylor, um, in a letter to the, the, the city, she indicated that she's been responsible for the property essentially since twenty seventeen. She just hadn't been able to take ownership of it until this year, correct?
My mom passed away in, uh, twenty twenty-one, so it had taken me until now to get that into my name and stuff.
Hadn't, hadn't you lived in the property prior to that?
I had, but I couldn't technically do anything in my name since it was in my mom's name.
So a little bit of a different situation than what we typically see, so the C D A felt comfortable granting the, the request.
Council, questions, comments, motions?
I would move approval of, uh, the Furlano Rail and McDaniel uh, residential exterior improvement grant.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Congratulations and good luck.
Thank you, everybody. I really appreciate it. Thanks.
You're very welcome.
Um, could we also just have a motion to deny the request from, for the seven forty-two East Madison Avenue?
Sure.
Thank you.
Is there a motion? If that is what the council wishes.
I, I would, uh, move that we, uh, deny the Williamson, uh, application and, uh, um, believe that, uh, perhaps the information has already been conveyed. Uh, that, um, uh, the owner of that property should, uh, apply under, uh, the, um, uh, commercial facade grant.
I'll second it.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? All right, um, so now we're on discussion and possible action on ordinance five thirteen regarding the annexation of land along North Vicarman Road in the town of Milton.
So Clausen Quality Chocolates recently purchased, uh, thirty-eight acres of land along North Vicarman Road, which is currently in the town of Milton. Uh, they would like to have that property annexed into the city of Milton. Uh, in the next item on the agenda, then they would take that parcel, uh, that parcel that they recently acquired and combine it with their existing one hundred and sixty-nine acre site and then further subdivide it, but we'll get into that a little bit more in the next one. But, uh, the item, ordinance five thirteen allows for that property to be annexed into the city of Milton and zone M two upon annexation.
Council.
I make a motion that we approve ordinance five thirteen annexing land along North Vicarman Road.
Is there a second?
Is that a motion to approve the first reading, wave second and third and adopt?
Yes, sir. That's, that, my mic was off.
I'll second.
And Teresa's mic was on.
I, I do have a question.
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
In regard to this, this is, um, additional city frontage on Vicarman. Is that correct?
This will create additional frontage along Vicarman, yes. As part of the next item, certified survey map, they will be dedicating, uh, right away for North Vicarman Road. Technically, at this time, North Vicarman Road is still under the jurisdiction of the town of Lima. Uh, but once all of these projects kind of coalesce, we will then take over jurisdiction of that to allow for Vic- North Vicarman to be improved as required in the TIF development agreement with Charter Next Generation.
Okay, I, I, um, seem to recall that in the earlier, um, annexation that included Vicarman Road, that there was some, uh, concern or responsibilities for that frontage.
Yeah, yeah, and this will extend that down, uh, to cover this site. Uh, but we're, we're waiting for Charter Next Generation to, uh, kind of move their plans forward for the improvement of North Vicarman Road, uh, and then we will start that process with town of Lima.
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, there is a motion. There is a second. Any further questions? All those in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? Okay, that motion carries and we will go on to discussion and possible action regarding a two lot certified survey map for Clausen Quality Chocolates along coming Parkway.
So upon annexing the thirty-eight acres of land that was just approved on the last item, uh, Clausen Quality Chocolates would like to combine that new parcel uh, within, with their existing one hundred and sixty-nine acre parcel and then divide that now two hundred acre parcel into two lots. The northern lot that fronts, uh, State Highway fifty-nine would be the lot that would be dedicated specifically to their manufacturing facility. The southern lot, south of Putman Parkway that fronts onto north, uh, now North Vicarman Road, uh, would house their trans- or their trucking facility. So the C S M would kind of separate those two parcels, even though they both would still be owned by Clausen Quality Chocolates.
Questions, comments?
I'll make a motion to approve the, um, two lot certified survey map along Putman Parkway.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Discussion and possible action regarding parking on State Highway fifty-nine and towing authorization including ordinance two thousand twenty-three four, five fourteen, two thousand twenty-three five fifteen and two thousand and twenty-three five sixteen. This is very complicated, so try to follow along and I will too. And we have, um, is this the one you're talking about? Nope, that's the next one. Okay, you're standing up, so.
I'm standing up because I can stand.
Okay, council, feel free to stand as needed. That's okay. Okay, so, chief, go ahead.
Um, I have a story. Um, earlier this spring, wintertime, we had a situation where a person had had some vehicle troubles and had abandoned their vehicle on State Highway fifty-nine near Dairy Queen. It was in the lane of traffic. That is a state highway and they threw route for the state highway, including large and, um, oversized loads that would come through there. And it made it very difficult for the traffic to pass with the position the car was left in, the owner was nowhere to be found, we just stumbled into the vehicle. Um, we quickly discovered in our search of the ordinances that we could not write a citation to that vehicle because we had no language in our ordinances about obstructing traffic. Um, we also discovered that, that stretch of roadway is not designated as a no parking zone in our ordinances, which took us by surprise because most of the rest of State Highway fifty-nine is, well, I shouldn't say most of the rest. At least this, the section along Madison Avenue is, there's other sections that do allow some parking. But given the width of the roadway, the median and all the factors at play, we feel that needs to be added to the ordinance. The other thing that we discovered is we don't have clear language in our ordinances that allows us to tow a vehicle that is in that circumstance where it's abandoned blocking a road. So we borrowed some language to look at through the city of Janesville and how they handle that and, um, put it into our language and Mark and his staff did a lot of work for us on putting that together, Mark Os. Um, so that's the proposal I bring to you tonight to just kind of fill in some gaps of some things that have not until now been included in our ordinances.
Questions or comments? And are we doing this like one ordinance at a time, right?
Darn.
I know, I, there was some excitement on that side.
Not Kate. I will.
Go ahead.
Make the motion to, uh, accept the first reading of, uh, ordinance five fourteen, wave the second and third and adopt.
Second.
There's a second.
Sorry.
All those in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed? Okay.
I'll make a motion to, uh, accept the first reading of ordinance five one five, wave the second, third reading and adopt.
Second.
Jump in at any time. There's a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? Okay.
And I'll make a motion to approve the first reading of ordinance five one six, wave the second, third reading and adopt.
Second.
And we heard from the other side. There's a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? All right, we're getting through this agenda. Okay, discussion and possible action regarding the process of municipal parking violations from the municipal court to the police department. Ordinance two thousand twenty-three five seventeen and updated parking bond schedule and Judge Keppler will speak.
Have questions? Great. Um, I can give you a quick summary on it if you'd like. I don't want to take up time if you're already behind the idea.
Um, does anybody want a summary or does anybody have any questions or concerns, comments? Bill?
Uh, I, I mentioned to, uh, uh, Judge Keppler, uh, previously that originally when I started to read it, I thought, I wonder what Judge Keppler thinks about this. And then saw that her name was in fact, um, uh, on it, uh, as well as, uh, the police chief. And, um, with the recommendation of those two people, I'm very comfortable in voting for it.
It, it does increase the Yeah, I'm sorry, I have trouble hearing. Um, it does increase the penalty for snow parking by two dollars if a person pays before the twenty days and our police department will collect that money. Um, and all the funds will stay within that department rather than being split between the state and the city. Um, we raised the snow parking ticket because it's our highest no parking ticket. Um, so it's only a two dollar raise if you want to plead in during that twenty days. And we send another letter that says, hey, it's twenty days, did you want to plead in or would you like to have a trial? So a person's rights are still all intact. Um, but we're streamlining this and should they lose at trial, then that fine increases or forfeiture increases. I think it's to seventy-eight dollars. Um, eighty, all right. Which, there it is, eighty-eight. Um, which felt fair. We discussed it with the police department and the courts. Um, it, it seems very appropriate. The city puts in a lot of work doing snow plowing and when they can't really reach the curb, they've got to come back. And it, it costs us all money and it's, um, it's a hazard in my opinion. It's not safe. So, if you have any other questions, um, please ask. I, I think this is a really good idea. Um, it will save most of the people who get tickets money as well as expediate the process and give more money to the city if the police department collects the fines.
Any?
I would move, um, approval of the first reading of, let's get the right number here. Um, ordinance twenty twenty-three five seventeen, uh, wave the second and third and adopt.
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? Okay, that motion carries. I, I just and then we will need for the parking bond schedule, a motion for that also if you choose to.
Um, can I just ask a quick question to Judge Keppler? Um, I see that we still have quite a few people that are driving without insurance or proof of insurance. Do you think that we need to, do we need to step up on that? So that, I just, I feel like, you know, we've had this insurance requirement of having to have that on you for several years.
Yes.
And if it's not, if we're not reducing that, is that something that we need to take a look at or?
I think the, and Scott can speak to us, I think it's one of the first things the officers take a look at along with a driver's license immediately. And, um, we try to get everybody law abiding as soon as we can. Um, and if they fail to be law abiding, then there's a ticket, but other than stopping and having checks on everyone, uh, there's no way to enforce that. Um, but the, rest assured, the department, th- this is a problem in every city. Um, and uh, we work on it every day.
Okay, and just because I, I might be missing something, but I don't find this on the agenda or related to parking, so.
I, I would move, I would move approval of the updated parking bond schedule.
Okay.
Second.
Thanks. There's a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. You want to pose? Okay, I do, I don't want to get yelled at by Mark Os. Yeah, so. Okay. I'm not sure. Discussion and possible action regarding the two thousand twenty-three H M A preventative maintenance project.
So this is the, um, Seal Cult project for this year. The list of streets are included in the memo, there's several that will be, um, included in the project. The bids were, or the project was advertised on May fifth and May twelfth, bids were open May twenty-fifth. The bids came back, um, below what we had, uh, budgeted for this work. Uh, Farner Asphalt Sealers was the low bid. They have completed work in the city of Milton prior to this. So we are recommending to award the twenty twenty-three H M A preventative maintenance project base bid and alternate one to Farner Asphalt Sealers LLC.
Any questions or comments?
I make a motion to approve the award of the twenty twenty-three H M A preventative ma- maintenance project bid to Farner Asphalt Sealers.
Is there a second?
Second.
Including the alternate?
And the alternate.
And I'll second that.
Okay, there is a motion and a second. Is there any questions or comments? All those in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? Okay. Okay, I gotta mark that up. All right, and more exciting topics from D P W. Discussion and possible action regarding the North Street sanitary sewer improvements.
So this was a project that was included in the, um, capital planning discussion that was held previous, earlier this year. Um, the project was bid on May third and May tenth and involves replacement of deteriorating sewer lines on North Street. B K S excavating out of Ederton was the low bidder with a total bid of two hundred eighty-two thousand three hundred eighty-four dollars. That was quite a bit more than what was estimated for the work. What we would propose to do is use the amount estimated and then the savings from the previous bid as well as cash on hand to fund the difference for the project. Uh, our recommendation is to award the North Street sanitary sewer improvement base bid and alternate to B K S Excavating, Inc.
Any questions? Any questions or comments?
I'll make a motion to award the North Street sanitary sewer improvements base bid and alternate to BKS Excavating Inc.
Second.
And did you want to include anything about the funding sources or just as the memo indicates how it'll be funded?
As the memo indicated, be funded.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, that motion carries. We're on page two. Discussion and possible action regarding continuation of a private lead service line replacement program and filing an application for financial assistance from the state of Wisconsin Environmental Improvement Fund.
Um, so similar to the last uh couple of years, the DNR has provided funding or made funding available for lead service line, private lead service line replacements. Um, Milton is in the process of completing our lead service inventory. Currently, we know of thir- uh fifty-seven services that would be eligible under the current program. The funding mechanism through the DNR is changing though this year. They will not be providing one hundred percent principal forgiveness. So the additional funding would either have to come from uh residents or the water utility. Um, so I just kind of open for discussion, try to answer questions and see if the council has any thoughts on continuing or to try to apply for the funding again or um or or uh or not. Um, previously in the two thousand twenty-one program, we were awarded five hundred fifty thousand. We replaced sixty-six service lines for a total cost of three hundred and six thousand, almost three hundred and seven thousand dollars. And the current funding cycle, which wraps up June thirtieth for construction, uh we were granted three hundred thousand and only seventy, little less than seventy-five thousand has been taken advantage of by customers to date.
Do we have any of the, any of the eligible um residents that have contacted you and shown any kind of an interest in this?
Um, nothing outstanding. There is a couple that are in the works to be done yet this year, but um we don't have any applications in waiting or anything like that. Um, we've sent out, over the course of the last couple of years, you've probably seen it in your water utility billing newsletters, um social media. I I think we've tried to do a pretty good job of notifying the public that it exists. Um, and and like indicated in the memo, it's a hundred percent principal forgiveness right now, which means there's zero cost to the customers. Um, coming in two thousand twenty-four, that's going to change. I I don't know what the change will be, what amount will be uh forgiven by the DNR. But um at this point, they're indicating that they will not be doing a hundred percent principal forgiveness.
Do we have an idea of, you know, you gave some numbers of projects and uh total dollars. Uh, can you give us sort of an average cost of one replacement?
Yeah, so there's been a couple of unique ones that have been more, but on average, I'd say probably between four and five thousand dollars per per home.
You know, I'd like to see us do whatever we can to encourage this. This is bad stuff. Uh, and getting rid of all of it should be a priority.
Any other questions, comments, or a motion?
Yeah, so we'd be looking for a motion to approve submitting the application or if not, there's not a motion required, I guess.
I would move that uh we approve uh the filing of an application for financial assistance from the state of Wisconsin Environmental Improvement Fund for private lead service line replacement.
Oh, second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye. Is there anyone opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Discussion and possible action regarding resolution two thousand twenty-three thirteen. Compliance Maintenance Annual Report.
So the C Mar uh is an annual report required by the Department of Natural Resources for all publicly and privately owned domestic treatment facilities. It's used as a self-evaluation tool to help determine performance, um needs, uh and kind of the status of the facilities. Uh, it it's completed on a ranking or a scoring system on a four-point scale. Uh, our current score is three point nine five, which is a little lower than last year, uh where we had a four. The reason for the um decrease is uh we have not performed a user charge system review within the last zero to two years is how the um application or the report lists that. We don't have any required improvements at this time and our treatment plan has an A rating. Uh, staff have consistently done a good job working with the um aging facility that we have. The recommended motion is to approve the C Mar report and resolution two thousand twenty-three thirteen for submittal to the Department of Natural Resources.
Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion to approve the C Mar report and the resolution two zero two-three dash thirteen for submittal to the Department of Natural Resources.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? All right, that motion carries. Discussion and possible action regarding lightning guidelines and special event permits.
So one of the topics that came up after the July fourth events last year um were some safety concerns with the stormy day that we had faced. And despite um the comments that I got about how cool it was that they got, the folks got to watch lightning along with fireworks. It really created a dangerous situation that we want to try to prevent in the future. Um, so in the research that I did over the past year, um I found that the most concise way to establish a policy for this is just to follow the same guidelines that the WIAA follows for their outdoor sporting events, um which our major um um professional leagues also follow at their outdoor spaces. And basically if um there is uh lightning, if there is lightning and thunder is heard, the event should be delayed and should all, activity should cease until the storm has passed. Uh, the same should be true if we ever fall under a thunderstorm warning or a tornado warning. Um, so uh the the biggest event that we have in the city of Milton at this point is July fourth. Derek Henze has been um a a big part in developing what this policy is going to look like, is very much in favor of it. It's also been reviewed by the um Lakeside Fire Rescue. Did I say that right? All right. Um, and so they have also signed off on it. Again, I think it's a simple way to impress upon our special event permit requesters that this is, this is how you follow the guideline. Um, WIAA is well respected and known throughout the state and uh shouldn't come as too big of a surprise that we're following these rules. There's really nothing I need the council to do tonight unless you wish, but I wanted to make sure you knew about it.
I would also add on there that the uh from the living history days, we also followed the same rules, thank, at the advice of the chief.
And this isn't going to be for every, you know, if there's a birthday party for ten people, we aren't going to require this. But if there's a large special event that is occurring on public property, we want to make sure that this safety rule is in effect.
I would just like to mention that it really is very efficient. I was at the WIAA uh state track and field conference this weekend and there were two different severe thunderstorm warnings and lightning. And so they blew the switch and over a couple of thousand people had to empty out of their fast. And they did. Um, so I found it very successful and efficient, so.
Thanks. So you know, you don't need any action from council. All right, any other comments on this? All right, we will go on to discussion and possible action on update to section seven point one two. Use of Technology and Electronic Communication Systems in the Employee Handbook and Policy Man.
So back in December of two thousand twenty-two, we did an update to the employee handbook and then um now we're looking at this specific policy and just looking at tweaking the language slightly based on a request from the union to provide a little bit more clarification on when us as the employer may access a personal device.
Questions or comments?
And this has also been reviewed by um both local union people in the police department and WPPA staff um and have approved of the language that we're now proposing.
Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve the changes to section seven point one two, Use of Technology and Electronic Communication Systems in the Employee Handbook and Policy Manual.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed? All right, that motion carries. Uh, just like to amend the record, we're on page three. Discussion and possible action regarding two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four committee and commission appointments.
Make a motion to approve the appointments.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed? All right. Presentation of the city's two thousand and twenty-two financial statements. Kelsey, it's all you.
These are the final audited two thousand twenty-two financial statements. Um, we've been working close with Hawkins and Ash to expedite the audit this year to stay on schedule for our upcoming borrowing. Um, we are just looking for council so chooses to approve and accept the two thousand twenty-two audited financial statements tonight.
Um, are there any questions or comments? Lucky you didn't have a quiz on this one for team building. Is there a motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Phew, general items. Um, is there any general items in general? Okay. Committee reports. Everybody have a committee report? Okay. Um, staff reports. Inga, do you want to go?
Um, we're continuing to work with Gov HR on the police chief recruitment. The application period closed on May thirtieth. There were twenty-one applications and now Gov HR is working through the next step of the process.
All right. Chief.
I'm still retiring.
Okay, okay, rub it in. All right, somebody cut his mic. Inga, can't you cut his mic? Who can cut his mic? Ashley.
Our summer reading program officially starts on Monday from twelve to two with a, with live music in Steve's Deli Dog House. We'll be there with his food truck. Um, registration is open for our Milton Mayhem Bike Scamager Hunt. I believe this is the sixth year we've been doing it. So there are various clues at ticket participants at different locations around Milton. And registration is open for our seventh annual Library Lollapdash for Books five K and One Mile fundraiser on Saturday, August nineteenth. And this is the Teen Advisory Board's annual fundraiser. And there has been lots of progress on Story Gardens in the last couple of weeks. If you haven't been down to library, we have our pathway in and the concrete under the gazebo. So, and hopefully there'll be some more stuff in the next couple of weeks as well.
Very exciting. Jenny?
I don't have much tonight except we have a, quite a few special event permit applications going through. Park rentals are, have increased. And then also uh staff is working on revamping some of our applications. And so to streamline them and then we're also starting to work with HeyGov on making those more interactive. So it's a, a new company. So it's just very exciting things happening.
Mark L.
Um, Clear Lake Avenue, they've, the contractors uh started setting up barricades late last week and then are doing some preliminary, you know, getting ready for construction, construction work. Um, the heavier construction is going to start tomorrow. The contractor's been working with the school to try to keep the road open um through the end of the school year as much as possible to try to assist, but then uh starting here tomorrow and end of the week and then next week, it's going to be fully closed off to through traffic, so.
So plan on biking or walking, not driving in that area. And there isn't going to be so July fourth is good as far as road construction in case, you know.
So we're going to stop. The construction is on Clear, North Clear Lake. It'll stop north of Madison Avenue. And then after the Fourth of July, they're going to move to Madison Avenue and do the construction along Madison Avenue with the goal of hopefully being wrapped up before school, but we'll see how the weather participates and all the other factors that come up through construction pros- proj- projects.
Kelsey, anything?
No updates tonight.
L, he's got nothing to say.
Yeah, nothing has changed. Nothing has changed for me since the last time we met, so.
That's awesome. Thanks. Okay, anything for anybody else? All right, so this is like a super simple team building exercise. Oh, it is so, like, I'm just, like, trying to move, like, like, really, we're, we have four pages, four pages. Um, so. All right, so here's team building. Here's the question. On Saturdays, do you get up early or do you sleep late?
I get up early. Right down the middle.
Early.
Okay. I can't even, like, keep up with you, so somebody make sure they're keeping track. Um. Early, early, middle of the road.
My kids could care less whether it's a weekday or a weekend, so it's the same time every single day, which is early.
I'm early. Early.
Mostly early.
Jen.
I would like to be late, but no, I am early.
Any other volunteers? Inga?
Between my kids and my dogs, I don't sleep in anymore on the weekends.
My cat makes sure it's early.
Now I have to be careful when I get up early if I'm out driving because Ryan is in the middle of the road.
All right, Mark S, like, that has got, or L, that has got to be one of the best dad jokes, yes. So the next team building exercise, just so you know, is going to be improv comedy. And um, you know, Bill Wilson's going to be leading it.
Mark S, are you earlier?
Compared to during the week, I would say late.
Oh, we should have really took a little wager on that. What about your fishing? Are you not getting up early to fish on Saturdays?
I don't have time to fish. I'm sorry.
Because the state of Milton keeps them so busy. Well, did we get the chiefs?
No.
No.
Well, I'm late answering, but I'm late for an answer or two.
Anybody in the audience that would like to? So before or afternoon, just out of curiosity? Before noon, okay, all right. The reporter is always welcome. Oh, that was not even an option, like.
So it's not an option for me?
Yeah. So there was early, late, middle of the road and uh both.
Our, our next team building can be, what do you mean by early?
Yeah.
But you know how, how much fun you all are. Now, 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 now. Who's the council president these days? You read it. And you can't skip a word.
I make a motion to. So I make a motion to convene and to close section, session pursuant to section nineteen point eight five one C, Wisconsin Stats, uh considering employment, promotion, compensation. Wisconsin Stats, Considering Employment, Promotion, Compensation, or Performance Evaluation Data of Any Public Employee Over Which The Governmental Body Has Jurisdiction or Exercises Responsibility Regarding City Administrator Position.
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Was that unanimous? Anyone opposed? It was unanimous.
Your memorial, please.